I know you will. So we're going to call this meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission to order, and we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I guess we need our TV coverage announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the Commission. I'm sorry, let me put my... Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County San Barbara Television, CSP-TV, on Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Focusing and San Inez Valley, Sanria and Orchid Areas. Reproduct of Montecito Planning Commission hearings on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSP-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website, as well as the county's YouTube channel, and will be available for download in a day or two. Should I move on to roll call? All right. Commissioner Palice. And Chair Kupiak. And for the record, Commissioner Miller is absent today. And just while I have the mic, Commissioner, I just wanted to... We'll get to that. Just in case anyone's wondering who this young gentleman is here, it's one of my staff members, Jonathan Martin. He's just going to be doing some cross-training today. And Council's reminding me very quickly that Commissioner Senour has... Because she is sitting remotely, has some declarations that she needs to make.
Yes, thank you. I am caregiving at this time remotely, off-site, for a four- and a six-year-old. No adults are in the room. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Senour.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. Looking at the standard agenda, we have two items on our standard agenda. The first item is going to be a request for continuance on that item that we'd continued to today's date. And then the second one is amendments to the Highway 101 widening project. And that is the status of the agenda. I can move to the projection report. So today is the last hearing of the Montecito Planning Commission of this year. And then looking at next year, we do have a hearing for January 15th, but as of right now, there are no items projected for that date. And then our next hearing will be February. It actually looks like we don't have any items projected yet for next year. So stay tuned
I have a question. The postponement of our famous poll for Southern Cal, if it's not on... If we're postponing it today, and we've not having it January, February's... When do they get their poll moved off the agenda permanently?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it is on the agenda. So when we get to that item on our standard agenda, staff will provide a date that that will be continued to. I thought it was in February, but when we get to that item, we'll be able to have this conversation.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. We... I thought we were at the 11th hour with this poll, and then it just sort of disappeared. But we don't have any details, but if there is some, I'd love to hear it.
Spoiler alert, it will occur on the first item on our standard agenda. So we'll be able to unveil that information.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's time to open the floor to public comment for any item that's not on the published agenda for today. Seeing no one and having no cards, I will close public comment and move on to planning commissioners' informational reports.
I'm a little dopey yet, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you were at a meeting that I was at? Does that fall under this?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Why don't you explain for both of us?
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday with Caltrans staff to go over what was being presented on today's agenda. So we would be pre-briefed, and we had a, I would have to say, a very good briefing that brought us up to speed.
And I attended as well.
And I would just say, I get to give a plug for, you know, since we do community projects all the time. Go visit our neighbors in Ojai, because we've just recently opened the historic Ojai Playhouse after a 10-year closure. And it's pretty great. So... Sandy?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of November 20th?
I'll move to approve the minutes of November 20th.
Looking at Donna, she's... I'll second. Everybody have any comments?
I have to recuse myself. I wasn't here.
Okay. I don't have that... Excuse besides you?
No one. Everybody was here other than me.
So we have a first and we have a second. If there are no corrections to the minutes, I guess let's take a roll call vote. Because Commissioner Stoll is... I'm sorry, Commissioner Senour is remote today. Commissioner Palice.
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll.
Yes.
Commissioner Senour.
Yes.
And Chair Kupiak abstain. Thank you so much. Motion passes 301.
And we can move on to the Director's Report, which I guess Jeff is going to do.
Mr. Chair, brief Director's Report. The Director is not in town. So just a quick recap. The item of note that applies to this commission is the Meramar Project. Did go to the Board of Supervisors last week, and it was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Seaworth here for any questions. However, this is the Director's Report, so I would ask that we refrain from a prolonged conversation on this, as it's not agendized to talk.
I have a question.
You get one question on each Director's Report.
There's a timeframe between the Board of Supervisors approving and then the potential for appeals to the Coastal Commission. And what is that timeframe? Is there 10 days, and once they post it? 10 days, is that after... Have you already had that start yet? So we... Where are we in this saga?
We heard the item on December 10th. I don't know what today is. So it's pretty close to being done. We haven't heard yet. Sometimes it takes a while for Coastal to tell us, but I haven't heard that there's been an appeal yet.
So that 10-day period starts... I thought you had to post something to make that start.
I don't know.
No?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
They receive... Oh, that's right, yeah. We send like the NOFO, right? Yeah. And then they receive it in the mail, and then the 10-day starts. So two or three days after the action takes place.
Okay, so it's probably started. Okay. And we won't know... We won't know until this whole period's over with, their whole 10-day, plus your lag time, whether or not there is even an appeal, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
And that concludes the Director's Report.
That gets us onto our standard agenda. So item number one, which is being postponed?
Yes. Mr. Chair, allow me to read it into the record, and it still looks like staff is here to provide a further explanation on that. The following is a hearing on the request of Edward Barrett, appellant, to consider the following appeal in compliance with Chapter 31, 182. For case number 24, APO 5, an appeal of the Director's approval of land use permit case number 23, LUP 417, and to determine the project is exempt from sequel pursuit and stay sequel guideline section 15303E.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we do have the project planner, Ms. Katie Knoll, here that can speak to questions by Commissioner Palice as far as the request by the applicant on this item.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. Just to reiterate the staff memo, the applicant, SoCalGas, has requested to continue the item to off calendar, which means we don't have a return date yet. And I can go into the details of that if you have any questions.
I just want to know, if you don't mind, pardon me. Is this poll and its operation, it's on the poll, it's just not essential enough for them to move it forward? Can you tell us more?
Yeah, of course. Commissioner Palice, through the chair. This, we were moving forward... The applicant was moving forward with their original proposal. We had responses to your comments from the last meeting, but last month, Public Works actually reached out to me and the applicant stating that they have plans to install a bike path along that entire right-of-way area. And nothing's finalized, but they're currently in discussions with Caltrans to finalize those plans. So the intent of this continuance is to wait until those plans are finalized before the applicant goes into discussions with Public Works, Caltrans, us, the county, to find an alternative location.
Yeah, I understand that future sidewalks hopefully will come before us that are being built in Montecito. So maybe you'll see us again. Who knows? All right. That's my last of my questions.
Okay. Sandy? Any note? Okay, let's move on to item number two.
So Chair and Commissioners, the motion that we'd be looking for on this is for a motion to remove this from the agenda. And before we do that, we should ask for public comment on the request to drop the item from the agenda. And seeing no hands raised online and receipt of no speaker slips on this item.
Okay, so public comment is closed, and a vote to continue for continuance?
I move that we drop this item from our agenda this year.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Palice.
Hi.
Commissioner Stoll.
Hi.
Commissioner Senour.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Chair Kupiak.
Hi.
Motion passes 4 to 0.
And I guess we can move on to number two and welcome all of our friends from Caltrans to make their presentation to us today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Want to read it into the record?
Happy to do so. The following is a hearing on the request of the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments and the State of California Department of Transportation to consider case number 24 AMD 2, as well as case number 24 CDP 23. And after considering the environmental review documents, including the addendum dated August 2024, together with previously adopted South Coast HOV lanes project EIR, determined as reflected in the sequel findings, no subsequent environmental impact report or negative declaration shall be prepared for this project.
Mr. Chair, I understand that you previously provided ex parte disclosures about today, but it might be worth stating on the record that, you know, to reiterate that you had had a meeting about this particular matter and see if any of the other members have ex parte disclosures.
I'll do it for us. Ron and I both had meetings yesterday to be pre-briefed on this by the int- ...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I'll move to approve the minutes of November 20th.
Looking at Donna, she's... I'll second. Everybody have any comments?
I have to recuse myself. I wasn't here.
Okay. I don't have that... Excuse besides you?
No one. Everybody was here other than me.
I guess we can take a vote.
So we have a first and we have a second. If there are no corrections to the minutes, I guess let's take a roll call vote. Because Commissioner Stoll is... I'm sorry, Commissioner Senour is remote today. Commissioner Palice.
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll.
Yes.
Commissioner Senour.
Yes.
And Chair Kupiak abstain. Thank you so much. Motion passes 301.
And we can move on to the Director's Report, which I guess Jeff is going to do.
Mr. Chair, brief Director's Report. The Director is not in town. So just a quick recap. The item of note that applies to this commission is the Meramar Project. Did go to the Board of Supervisors last week, and it was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Seaworth's here for any questions. However, this is the Director's Report, so I would ask that we refrain from a prolonged conversation on this, as it's not agendized to talk.
I have a question.
You get one question on each Director's Report.
There's a timeframe between the Board of Supervisors approving and then the potential for appeals to the Coastal Commission. And what is that timeframe? Is there 10 days, and once they post it? 10 days, is that after... Have you already had that start yet?
Yeah.
So we... Where are we in this saga?
We heard the item on December 10th. I don't know what today is.
18th.
So it's pretty close to being done. We haven't heard yet. Sometimes it takes a while for Coastal to tell us, but I haven't heard that there's been an appeal yet.
So that 10-day period starts... I thought you had to post something to make that start.
I don't know.
No?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
They receive... Oh, that's right, yeah. We send like the NOFO, right? Yeah. And then they receive it in the mail, and then the 10-day starts. So two or three days after the action takes place.
Okay, so it's probably started. Okay. And we won't know... We won't know until this whole period's over with, their whole 10-day, plus your lag time, whether or not there is even an appeal, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
And that concludes the Director's Report.
That gets us onto our standard agenda. So item number one, which is being postponed?
Yes. Mr. Chair, allow me to read it into the record, and it still looks like staff is here to provide a further explanation on that. The following is a hearing on the request of Edward Barrett, appellant, to consider the following appeal in compliance with Chapter 31, 182. For case number 24, APO 5, an appeal of the Director's approval of land use permit case number 23, LUP 417, and to determine the project is exempt from sequel pursuit and stay sequel guideline section 15303E.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we do have the project planner, Ms. Katie Knoll, here that can speak to questions by Commissioner Palice as far as the request by the applicant on this item.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. Just to reiterate the staff memo, the applicant, SoCalGas, has requested to continue the item to off calendar, which means we don't have a return date yet. And I can go into the details of that if you have any questions.
I just want to know, if you don't mind, pardon me. Is this poll and its operation, it's on the poll, it's just not essential enough for them to move it forward? Can you tell us more?
Yeah, of course. Commissioner Palice, through the chair. This, we were moving forward... The applicant was moving forward with their original proposal. We had responses to your comments from the last meeting, but last month, Public Works actually reached out to me and the applicant stating that they have plans to install a bike path along that entire right-of-way area. And nothing's finalized, but they're currently in discussions with Caltrans to finalize those plans. So the intent of this continuance is to wait until those plans are finalized before the applicant goes into discussions with Public Works, Caltrans, us, the county, to find an alternative location.
Yeah, I understand that future sidewalks hopefully will come before us that are being built in Montecito. So maybe you'll see us again. Who knows? All right. That's my last of my questions.
Okay. Sandy? Sandy, no? Okay, let's move on to item number two.
So Chair and Commissioners, the motion that we'd be looking for on this is for a motion to remove this from the agenda. And before we do that, we should ask for public comment on the request to drop the item from the agenda. And seeing no hands raised online and receipt of no speaker slips on this item.
Okay, so public comment is closed, and a vote to continue for continuance?
I move that we drop this item from our agenda this year.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Palice.
Hi.
Commissioner Stoll.
Hi.
Commissioner Senour.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Chair Kupiak.
Hi.
Motion passes 4 to 0.
And I guess we can move on to number two and welcome all of our friends from Caltrans to make their presentation to us today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Want to read it into the record?
Happy to do so. The following is a hearing on the request of the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments and the State of California Department of Transportation to consider case number 24 AMD 2, as well as case number 24 CDP 23. And after considering the environmental review documents, including the addendum dated August 2024, together with previously adopted South Coast HOV lanes project EIR, determined as reflected in the sequel findings, no subsequent environmental impact report or negative declaration shall be prepared for this project.
Mr. Chair, I understand that you previously provided ex parte disclosures about today, but it might be worth stating on the record that, you know, to reiterate that you had had a meeting about this particular matter and see if any of the other members have ex parte disclosures.
I'll do it for us. Ron and I both had meetings yesterday to be pre-briefed on this by the int- this by the entire presentation team. I have no other ex parte.
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Senour? I don't, she's off the screen.
She's gone.
There she is.
Did she hear you?
I have no ex parte. There was a meeting scheduled, which I was unable to attend. So for this item, I have no ex parte.
Thank you. Okay.
See you next year.
Good morning, Chair Kupiak, members of the commission. My name is Chris Schmuckel. I'm the planner for the project. I'm going to give a brief presentation once we get it pulled up here, and then we'll go to the applicant team and questions. Just give us one second to pull up the PowerPoint.
Got three dollars?
Oh, let's see. There we go. All right. So this is the Highway 101 Amendment Project for Segment 4D in Montecito. The applicant is Santa Barbara County Association of Government and Caltrans, and they've been working on the Highway 101 in motion plan, which will widen the Highway 101 by adding a high occupancy vehicle lane in both the northbound and southbound direction from Carpinteria all the way to the city of Santa Barbara. Segment A has been completed and segments D, B through E are in different phases of construction. Project we're talking about today is Segment 4D. This is in the Montecito Community Plan area and was approved by the Board of Supervisors on April 4th, 2023. Construction started that summer and the project included adding the new HOV lane, new bridge improvements, new concrete pavement, barrier walls, and some new landscaping. So the project before us today is a request for an amendment for minor changes to the previously approved development plan. The changes include maintaining the existing channel walls at Oak Creek, Romero Creek, and San Ysidro Creek instead of installing bulkheads, raising the freeway elevation by about 2.8 feet resulting in a finished grade closer to San Ysidro, North Jamison Lane, construction of a type 85 guardrail instead of a solid barrier wall along approximately 1,650 feet of the northbound pavement of the highway, and construction of a guardrail instead of a solid barrier wall around approximately 600 feet of the southbound pavement. The project also includes modifications to the planting plan. So just to orient you, the slide shows the location of the barrier walls in Montecito. So the green is type 85 barrier wall and then the blue is the guardrail. And previously, these were just solid barrier walls, but now they, they're proposing to change them into these two different barriers. So this is an updated rendering that shows what that type 85 barrier and the guardrail will look like. The type 85 barrier is on the right-hand side and it's concrete with that brown, almost like faux wood on the top. This is a design that's shown in other locations of the highway corridor and is consistent with, with those sections as well. The guardrail is on the left-hand side of the slide and there's a Natina coloring to it, and that's consistent with the other portions of the project too. This also shows the updated landscaping along the right side of the barrier wall. So for environmental review, the development plan relied on a 2014 EIR and a 2017 revised EIR. In addition, there were some addendums that were done in 2018, 2020, 2021, and 2022. For this amendment, Caltrans prepared and approved a 2024 addenda incorporating these project changes, and the addendum shows that the project will not generate a new significant environmental impact or worsen a previously identified environmental impact to the point where it would now be significant. The project is also consistent with a comprehensive plan, including the Montecito Community Plan. Staff reviewed the project and found that it's consistent with the policies, including adequate services, aesthetics, biological resources, et cetera. Project's also consistent with the Article 2 coastal zoning ordinance and the environmentally sensitive habitat development standards and the transportation corridor wetland overlay. The project is in the same location as the previously approved development plan and will not impact any resources that were not already reviewed and mitigated by the previously approved So staff is recommending that the commission adopt a resolution recommending that the county planning commission make the, recommending that the county planning commission approve this project, adopt the required findings for approval, and consider the environmental review package and determine that no EIR or negative declaration shall be prepared. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions. We also have county flood control staff here as well that are available for questions too. And once we make it through all the presentations and questions, we can pull up a document and capture your resolution, whether it's, you know, conditions or comments that you want to include on the resolution to the county planning commission.
Thank you. David, do we need to do public comment?
Mr. Chair, we, we should switch to the applicant presentation before we go to public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And I have the presentation pulled up, but we're just getting some batteries for the clicker. So just.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Kupiak and Commissioners. It's good to be here before you. Fred Luna with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. I'm here with several of our team members with the Highway 101 team, Zach Zaviglia, Kirsten Ayers, Joe Arnold, and then we have a couple people online, David, so Aaron Silva and Christine Anderson. So if there's any questions, okay, I see that they are online. Thank you. First of all, I want to, as was already mentioned, I want to thank Chair Palice and, I mean, Commissioner Palice and Chair Kupiak for joining us in the pre-briefing that we had on Monday. I think that was helpful to be able to, it's the same presentation we're giving today. As you recall, and it was mentioned in, in Mr. Schmuckel's presentation, it was about two years ago that we went with, through the Montecito Planning Commission for the coastal development permit for the Montecito segment. And the reason why we're back here is essentially that the requirement to comply with one of the conditions of approval and a letter that we had received from flood control. We had thorough conversations, if you recall, about not, not having the project create any type of rise condition, whether it's any of the improvements or sound walls. In particular, a lot of the discussion early on focused on sound walls. I can assure you that in this most recent analysis with the new FEMA mappings that were published after the CDP was approved in 2023, the maps were actually released in the spring of '24, that we did the analysis to show that still sound walls contribute to a rise condition in, in the Three Creeks area. But we also had to evaluate those related to the overall project and thus there was changes, as was already mentioned, to some barriers and landscaping. And so that's what we're presenting here today. And at this point, if you can go to the next slide.
And apologies, our clicker is not working. So yeah, if you just, you can just manually tell me, I'll do it for you.
Okay.
Okay. So just wanted to mention that the project started construction in 2023. This was a few months after we received the coastal development permit for the project. And as I had already mentioned, it was nearly a year later that the FEMA maps were released for this area. And so during our construction of some of the initial work in the corridor, we had to retool and revisit the project because of the new mapping that was released. And we worked closely with identifying the change initially with planning and development team, but also working with the flood control staff to define a method for which we were going to integrate any potential changes. And we came up with several solutions that Zach's going to talk about at this point in time. We thought it would be helpful for you to look at a timeline that kind of shows the, how we've proceeded through this process. And so I'm going to hand it over to Kirsten Ayers and she's going to walk you through that.
Good morning. Thanks for having us back again. So here's the timeline, just to catch everybody up to speed. So we were back before you pretty much about six months, spring to fall of 2022, and we went through all of the details at that time. And then your comments were forwarded to the county planning commission and we received approval from the county planning commission in the fall of '22. And then the project was appealed and it went to the Board of Supervisors, and that happened in the spring of 2023. And that's also, we got approval again. They denied the appeal. And that's also when we started working on the conditions of approval with staff. So after you get approval, of course, there's conditions of approval that have to be implemented. So we worked on those with staff, county staff, and then started construction in the summer of 2023 in the Montecito segment. And as Fred mentioned, we've been under construction for about nine months before FEMA released the draft mapping. And we all knew it was going to be coming out sometime, but it came out in the spring of this year, 2024. And so what that did is it required one of those conditions of approval to kick in, and that was that when the FEMA mapping came out, we always had to go through a FEMA process, if you will, for the project. Normally, that happens behind the scenes at the staff level. The reason you're seeing it today is there are some design changes to the profile of the freeway and to the safety barrier, and that's why we're back in a public process for that. But basically, the gist of the FEMA requirement is that we cannot move water from one watershed to another. So Fred's going to show you a map that shows you the watersheds. It's a little complicated in the Three Creeks area, so Romero, San Ysidro, and Oak Creek, because those watersheds kind of flow together. But our project can't move water from one watershed to another, and that's mainly based on, so we don't increase flooding from somebody downstream. Okay? So it's a, it's an important rule to meet. So that's why you're seeing these changes today, is we needed to comply with that. And that's also the reason for the change in the safety barrier that Zach will show you in just a minute. So it goes from a solid barrier to an open barrier. And he'll tell you the pros and cons. We had two different kinds of open barriers we went through, and he'll tell you the pros and cons of those two and show you what those look like. So we evaluated all of this new information from FEMA in the spring of this year. As Fred mentioned, the team also looked at sound walls again just because we knew it was a question that would come up. It was not a condition of approval at this point because we had timed out of the condition of approval for relooking at sound walls, but we looked at it anyway. And as Fred already gave you the punchline of that, that is that nothing's really changed in terms of allowing sound walls. There would still be a rise. So we are not adding sound walls into the project. We still can't meet that requirement. So after we evaluated all of this, we went out to the public and shared the changes to the barrier that we talked about that you'll see today. And so we did that late spring, early summer. And then we went to the Montecito Board of Architectural Review this summer, and we met with them a few times to talk about the different barrier options, changing from a solid barrier to an open barrier. The main gist of that is how much landscaping can we get behind the barrier? And so Zach will show you. We had to do an open barrier to get the floodwaters through. If we do a metal barrier, the problem is we can't get enough landscaping because there has to be a deflection space left behind the barrier. So we changed to a concrete barrier. That enables us to get the water through. It's open, but we can also get all the landscaping. So you'll see that the team has done a really good job of meeting both requirements. So the Montecito Board of Architecture Review liked the changes, and that led us to your, back to your commission today. So we'll show you all of those changes in just a minute, and then, as Chris mentioned, we'll be going to the county planning commission in January. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, to Zach, to show you the details of what we've just been talking about. Isn't it, Fred?
Thank you.
Good morning. Good to be back and see you all. Next slide, please. So just to orient everyone on this map, there's a lot going on. First, north is up, so if you're looking at the screen, the Sheffield interchange would be just off to the right hand of the screen. The San Ysidro interchange would be just off to the left hand of the screen. There's a lot on this slide. As Kirsten mentioned, this is a very complex floodplain. So all the lines on the screen represent the overlapping floodplains from the Three Creeks area, the San Ysidro, Romero, and Oak Creeks. And then what's shown there in the yellow is that inundation area from the recovery mapping. Previously, it was shared that we're looking at the three green highlights, so the ones that are between the freeway and North Jamison Road, and then the one that's just along the south side of the freeway, just directly east of the Postalepo on-ramp. Next slide. So this just simplifies things. It removes all of those overlapping lines just for clarity so you can see the areas that we are talking about. As Kirsten mentioned, the requirements for the new floodplain analysis did result in some changes to the project, which is why we're back here at the board.
Can I ask you a question before you go any further? I'm losing track of yourself. The, the gray marks that show like, I guess, the culverts crossing the freeway, the far-left one is?
That is Oak Creek. So it goes Oak, San Ysidro, and Romero.
So Montecito Creek's not in this.
Yeah, if you go from left to right.
Okay, so Oak Creek's by itself there on, on the left. It's not combining into Romero or San Ysidro. But I thought, I heard earlier that the floodways of Oak Creek could contribute to raise the elevation of the, the other two, one of them?
Yes. So if, could you go back to one, one slide? So again, the, the challenge with this area is that you have these three really closely spaced floodplains. And the way that the project was modeled before using the current effective FEMA mapping, so what's shown there in blue is the current effective FEMA mapping. The profile changes that we were originally proposing with the project, when we analyzed the project under the current draft FEMA mapping, had water going from one shed to another, which is why we had to then raise and adjust the profiles of the freeway.
So what you're saying is that Oak Creek, the, the gray goes downhill to San Ysidro Creek. And so it could collectively take water from Oak and put it in San Ysidro. But right now, we have a bulkhead that blocks the quantity of water, right? Because we don't have downstream proper openings. And so you've got a third on each side of it blocked. So we're only using the existing waterway.
Correct, yes. So just to clarify, because the, the existing bridges that are out there today, and if you've driven through the corridor, you'll see that the first half of those bridges have been, have been replaced. The project proposes to widen the bridges so that ultimately in the future, when future flood control improvements are made along the channel, there's enough capacity underneath the freeway to accommodate those improvements. However, because of downstream impacts, we still had to have a bulkhead in those channels, because if you would have opened up the channels without doing any of the necessary downstream impacts, it would have resulted in downstream floodplain impacts to the properties surrounding the channels.
So, all right. That being said, maybe this is a question for flood control, but I'm going to ask you first. The, the restriction of why we can't have a sound wall, there's, I learned there's a second one, which kind of wipes out my first one, that being the fact that there's only a certain quantity of residences behind these walls, and if it doesn't reach a certain threshold, they don't qualify for sound mitigation with the sound wall. That was like number seven on your list of eight or whatever it was. But back to the flood control one, which is number two or something, it said that we can only, only allow X amount of inches, centimeters, like 1.2 inches. Maybe that could be clarified. But what is, what is the permissible rise in, that's just permissible without having a?
Yeah, I would, I would, once.
You're going to pass that along to Walter?
To expand, but my understanding is that it is zero, that there is no rise.
Zero. No rise is allowed.
There's not a permissible, when you're in a defined FEMA floodway, my understanding is that there is no rise.
Okay. Does no rise mean no rise contributing by other creeks as well, or just no rise?
If you study the proposed improvements with this project, the 101 project,
Yeah.
that the project cannot result in any rise either upstream or downstream of the proposed improvements.
So if I look at Oak Creek itself, if there's no water contributing, and Walter, I don't, I'll give you a chance to tell me I'm wrong. If there's no water contributing from upstream of Oak Creek down San Ysidro or on North Jamison to the opening at Oak Creek. So you're saying- So you're saying if there's water that comes from Oak Creek that floods at the, at the area of the creek, that contributes to it? Not just the road above it?
Yeah. And again, there's, there's a lot to this watershed. But essentially, everything, all of the water is going from the hillside towards the ocean. And as it makes its way through all of those various channels, ultimately, it gets to the point where it crosses through the freeway. And in this, in this area, the floodwaters actually go over the freeway currently. So there's, there was just a storm, I believe, as beginning part of this year, where a portion of the northbound lanes were closed because, again, the capacity at, with these channels.
All of them?
I don't know which ones they are. I would, again, ask floodplain to clarify.
Well, the point I'm making is that Oak Creek, from a former civil engineering contractor, that if the flooding was from Oak Creek going down the road to San Ysidro, if that's what we're talking about flooding over at San Ysidro or Romero, but not Oak Creek, I just, I'm curious.
Yeah. All of the existing channels, in my understanding, all of the existing channels, Oak, Romero, and San Ysidro Creek, neither of those channels have enough capacity to accommodate the 100-year flood currently. And so all of them would be passing over the freeway. So that floodplain that's shown there represents the existing condition where the floodwaters do pass over the top of the freeway.
Okay. And that would necessitate water being backed up on the roads itself as well? Because if it's, that creek and that curve above the culvert is only six inches, or whatever it is, nine inches?
Yeah. And I do believe that the, that the floodwaters exceed the capacity of the channels far north of the 101 project. So north of the 101 project, they are coming out of their channels. And that's where you have that overland flow that comes through the neighborhood area, ultimately, to the freeway, where it then crosses over the freeway. But it is exceeding the channels north of the 101 project.
Yeah. Okay. But even if it didn't, we're still, we lose out on the other criteria. There's seven, seven or eight of them. If there's not enough homes to offset that cost, you can't build it anyway, according to FIPS, the Federal Highway Program.
The Federal Highways Administration, they have sound wall protocols.
Yeah.
And it defines a, an allowance for, that has to be met for sound walls to be constructed. So you look at benefited receptors, and there's a certain allowance in there. And then how many, how much does the sound wall cost? And if the sound wall cost exceeds that allowance that's issued, then by, by requirements, the agency cannot construct the sound wall.
And we can't contribute money towards that ourselves?
No.
It has to be. And then, did you, has anyone given money to the extremely affected neighbors on the freeway? Has anything been distributed from the federal government or the state?
Do you want to answer that? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, can we finish the presentation a little?
Uh-oh.
Commissioners, if we could let them finish their presentation.
We're almost done here. Let us finish, then they can finish.
Okay.
Okay, so if I understand the question.
They could answer some of your questions. So I just think it's important to let them finish their presentation.
All right. I understand that I'm answering the question of Commissioner Polichay. If I understand the question, has any money been given to those benefited receptors that did not get a sound wall as a result of the original determination through the permit? And yes. So one of the requirements or that the project team was following in the sound wall protocol was that we were able to provide a, an allowance of, for, for, for some of the benefited receptors that, if they would accept it, that would say that they would get a certain requirement based on, it ended up being somewhere in the order of $70,000 or $80,000. That was kind of escalated to today's dollars. And so 15 residences or properties received an allowance for that.
Okay.
And it was for the severe receptors, yeah. And so that was, that's a separate classification of, of noise that existed for those particular residences. And then they could use that to add architectural features that would help noise in, within their living spaces.
Well, it's nice to know that you, it's a feather in the cap of contributing to the effect of that sound, that they were the most affected. Okay, thank you for, I'm sorry I interrupted your presentation. But since we're on flood control, I wanted to complete it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring it in for landing, using the same analogy. So if you can go to the next, maybe the next couple slides. So I think Kirsten already mentioned these slides real briefly. We went to MBAR in August of '24. And these are the comments we received. This is after our second iteration with them. The project had already been modified to include the concrete barriers, the open barrier type. There were some additional changes that they had requested. And they actually commissioned a subcommittee to refine some of the planting concepts, which have been also incorporated into the project plans to date. Next slide. And these are those detailed comments that came out of the Montecito MBAR Subcommittee. You can see that there. Maybe I'll keep it up. I'm not going to read them, but you can, you can see those comments. Essentially, they were looking for some upsizing of plants and a little change in the arrangement, or the actual design, of the, of the landscape material. Next slide. So I'm going to hand it back to Zach, and he can finish this out on the, kind of what we're seeing.
So what this slide shows, as I mentioned, the floodplain analysis resulted in raising the profile that was originally proposed with the project. So what's shown on the left there was the original design to improve the stopping site distance. Essentially, for freeway design, you want to improve how far a driver can see in front of them. And so if you have large humps in the freeway, obviously, drivers cannot see beyond that point. And so the original design had that freeway being lowered. And that's why you see that concrete barrier. The freeway was lower than North Jamison. And so we were able to have that solid concrete barrier because, again, as floodwaters were coming towards the freeway, they would just flow over the top of that barrier and then continue across the freeway. When we had to adjust the freeway, which is shown on the left side of the screen, we had to raise the profile, raise the elevation of the freeway. If we kept a solid concrete barrier, it would result in raising the water, the floodwaters, north of the freeway, along North Jamison. So we looked at putting in what is like a metal beam guardrail that you see along the freeway. The problem with that, as Kirsten mentioned, is when a vehicle hits that barrier, it is going to move backwards. And it's going to move backwards about four feet. So there are safety restrictions for the size of tree that you can put behind a metal beam guardrail because you don't want the vehicle to then hit that tree. So we ended up landing on the Type 85 barrier, which if you've driven through the corridor, you see this barrier on all of the bridges through the corridor. It's that open-faced barrier. And the benefit that that has is it's a solid barrier. So if a vehicle hits that, it's not going to deflect. So you can have larger trees in that area. So we were able to stick with the original design that was proposed in that space with the modifications that Fred mentioned that came from the MBAR review and that subcommittee that was established. So this is what was ultimately reviewed and accepted by MBAR and is here for discussion today. But next slide, please. So we did produce another rendering, this was shared earlier, of just what that area would look like. Again, before, you would have seen a solid barrier along the right-hand side of the screen. And this Type 85 barrier allows us to maintain the planting that was originally proposed with those slight modifications and then ultimately allow the floodwaters to pass through the freeway as well. So with that, I think Kirsten is going to wrap us up.
All right. Well, thank you for having us back today. So just to summarize, the reason we're here today is because the project reevaluated the design based on the draft FEMA mapping that came out. We had to change the profile of the freeway so that we didn't move water from one watershed to another in this Three Creeks area. So that's Romero, San Ysidro, and Oak Creeks. And then we also had to change the barrier from a solid concrete barrier, safety barrier, to an open safety barrier. And we stuck with concrete after review with MBAR because we could keep the planting that was originally proposed. Now, remember, it's a small space. So it's, in some areas, less than six feet. We can't have a tree bigger than six feet. We can have a tree. So you see here, we have trees because we're able to maximize the amount of space we have between the edge of pavement and the right-of-way line. So that's the long and short of it. But we're happy to answer any questions that you have as well.
So, nice presentation, all of you. Thank you very much. Kirsten, so is the irrigation to this system of planting you have here, is the vine on the fence getting the same water treatment as these things are getting?
Yes, good question. So a couple of things about the plants and irrigation. Number one, part of the planting plan all along was to either use drought-tolerant or native plants to help reduce the water usage. And that's important because, as you remember, when we were doing design for this project, we were in the middle of that eight-year drought. So we were all very aware of what happens if you put landscaping in and you don't have water. These will all have water. We already have the meters on the freeway already. So they will have water. They will be watered for establishment. We also have a plant establishment period for the plants that is a number of years so that the plants can be established. As you know, when you put in a big project like this, sometimes you put in a plant and it will die. The plant establishment period replaces those plants that die and gives them a chance to get established, basically, get the roots established so that they can grow after that. So all of that is included.
So is there any responsibility for the county when it comes to this landscape?
No.
So Caltrans and your authority will maintain this?
Yes. And I think what you're getting at, Ron, is probably past experience in this area where plants have been put in and haven't thrived. So there's some backstories. I won't go into too many details. But there were a lot of gopher problems and broken irrigation in past projects that led to landscaping in this area being put in and either being eaten or dying right away. That's why we're doing a number of things. So new irrigation, so we won't have broken irrigation being a problem. We've got plants that are selected that are either drought-tolerant or native, but also we've seen grow in our corridors. So that's important because the freeway environment is not the same as your backyard, right? It's much harsher. It's harder for plants to grow. So we've selected plants that we know will grow well because they already grow well in the freeway corridor. And then, and so in addition to irrigation and landscaping, then there's also the plant establishment periods so that they can get established. If they die right away, they get replaced. And the contractor's out there for a couple of years, a minimum of three years.
So what happens after three years?
After three years, then regular maintenance kicks in with Caltrans. So the maintenance continues.
I see. And so, since this hasn't been.
Five years. I was just corrected. The plant establishment period is five years for the Montecito segment.
Good. So.
Commissioner Polichay through the chair, too. I also want to mention that we have permit compliance on this. So our permit compliance planner is going to make sure that those conditions and requirements are being met, too.
Okay. Let me ask you, as far as the water use situation, a lot of people have gone back from drip to sprinkler, back to drip. How is this being watered here? Do you know? Irrigated?
It's a drip. Thanks, Joe. Joe is, just to give you, I'm not coming up with these myself. Joe Arnold from Caltrans is here, is also a landscape architect. It's reminding me of key points. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. So that's, that's something new, right, Joe?
Come on up. We do use it in other parts of the corridor while Joe's coming up. So it's not like 100% new.
Yeah.
And our landscape architect is also on the line, too.
Sure.
Thank you. Good morning. Joe Arnold, project manager with Caltrans, also a registered landscape architect. So the freeway irrigation that we utilize in the corridor for all these projects, as well as what Caltrans has been moving towards, is a sustainable approach towards landscaping. That includes watering through drip irrigation systems that gives an efficient measures to the, direct to the plant, as opposed to what you were mentioning as overhead broadcasting irrigation.
Right.
So this method is also done through an irrigation controller system that's provided on a routine schedule to allow for those plants to begin thriving in those conditions. And it's based on the ZIP code in the area that you're in. So that irrigation doesn't just put out water. It puts out water based on the needs of the community, or needs in the area that it's in.
You could check it with your phone, then?
Our maintenance has iPads, so they go out in field. And a lot of these are now geo-referenced, so they can actually go to the source of the issue as it is. So that, we're coming online with the technology and getting more efficient through that. And I did want to mention also that we do have a freeway maintenance agreement. And in our freeway maintenance agreement, it's been updated. And that includes maintaining these plantings and the expectations.
Thank you very much. By the way, you guys are doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Could I ask?
Sandy?
When you consider what you're going to plant there, is there any consideration given to how tall they eventually can go to?
Yes. Absolutely. The full maturity height is what the ultimate growth pattern is for them. But in the freeway conditions, we don't see them as a typical backyard condition. So where a tree may have a canopy of 50 feet wide, we may only experience a 30-foot-wide canopy.
But height?
Height is similar. So some of these conditions where they're placed in concrete-to-concrete, they're not getting a same environment as a natural setting. But we do consider that, and we do factor in that decrease to the overall height and pattern of that planting that's going in.
So you consider what it might impact people's views?
Correct. Yes. And that is a, that was a big consideration in these corridors. Moving all the way through the planning process, we took view sheds into consideration as well.
And was there a consideration given to more solid plantings rather than tree, tree, tree? In, just in terms of how it could, in small part, mitigate some of the sound? Just to do something that's more solid? I mean, I know you can't do hedges that need to be trimmed and everything, but sort of more hedge-like shrubbery that possibly could mitigate?
So I'll, I'll say that through studies throughout, as we've progressed and through my experience in becoming licensed, planting is not a noise attenuation device or a sound wall. It doesn't measure that way. It does perceive it that way, as a visual barrier, but not as a noise barrier. In the case of plantings and what we consider it as part of our design review committees that we led up to, I'll say, a number of years ago in this process, we have mitigation requirements on the project. And through those mitigation requirements, we have to meet specific amounts of trees throughout the project. And in Montecito, that's the heavily, or the most confined right-of-way space that we have, we have to do what we can to meet those conditions. And if we can't meet them, we have to place them elsewhere in the corridor. And in this case, we've met our conditions and we made our requirements through what you see in the planting that's been presented on the plans.
Are we going to continue to have questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Senour has questions.
So to add to your question, Commissioner Stahl, too, that part of that MBAR Subcommittee, too, they recognize that we have a requirement to try to reach those mitigation plantings with the tree replacements. But what they didn't want is they didn't want to see, like, just a row of the same tree. So they wanted some variety in there. Your question about understory plantings, the short plantings, as you can see here, they are part of the overall planting plan. So the idea is trees, tall shrubs, shorter shrubs, and ground plantings, as space allows. So when it gets narrower, we have fewer options, obviously, to do that. But as you see in other parts of the corridor where we have a wide space, like by the bridges, then we're able to get all of those elements in.
Thank you.
Yeah. Want to go to Commissioner Senour?
Commissioner Senour, I believe you have your hand up?
Yes. Yes, I do. Thank you. While landscaping is up, a question regarding water supply and metering. Or do you have separate meters? Does Caltrans? How does that work with MWD? I take it there is a separate metering for this, that Caltrans pays for the watering? How does that work, please?
So good question, Commissioner Senour. Yes, Caltrans already has meters for the freeway today. Those meters are being used for this new project as well. The big change that you'll see is that all of the irrigation will be new. So the meters are already there. We can use them still to provide the water. But the biggest impact that we'll see is completely new irrigation lines. And considering the freeway is from the 1950s, you know, you've seen irrigation break throughout the corridor. We all have. As we're able to replace that, that's a huge, big impact in the, in the benefit of the plants and visuals.
And do you, you follow the Welo, the state threshold for, for consumption, for watering?
Yes. It's a requirement of the project.
Okay. And do you know what that is? I'm just curious.
Very, yeah, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello again. So-
Thank you.
Commissioner Senour, I believe what you're asking is the muelos calculation?
Yes.
So I don't have those figures. It is an extensive figure, an extensive packet that's required.
Okay.
With Montecito Water District, they do have to prove the number of water or amount of water that's being used.
Acre feet?
Correct. Yeah. The total number of acre feet and the total number of gallons anticipated every year for this project.
Okay. Thank you. Another question. How with replacement and mitigation, is there off-site placement for the amount of trees you're mitigating for? Is there enough space? Are you planting them in the same area or are they off-site, some of them?
So throughout the corridor, we're able to meet our mitigation with our tree plantings. In Montecito, as you know, we've talked about a lot of times, this is our most constricted corridor, meaning that we have the least amount of space. So some of the trees that need to be planted in the Montecito segment, there's not enough space, we're planting them in the Summerland segment. So when you drive through, you see that there are extensive tree plantings going on. We will also have extensive tree plantings in Montecito, but we just don't have as much space as we need to plant all of the mitigation trees in Montecito.
So, so most of the mitigation trees are in Summerland or will be in Summerland?
No. Montecito will be completely planted out as much as we can get in as space allows.
Right.
And then the extra ones that we just can't fit in, those go in Summerland.
That's, yeah, that's what I was referencing. Thank you. Also about the chain-link fence with the plantings. How do they, how does debris flow impact? What is the strength of the fencing in our flooding in the past, in the past years? Are the, does that create a flood rise? If there's, are they significantly stable where if debris, logs, parts of houses, et cetera, do they, are they structured engineering-wise to fail? You see where I'm going with this?
Yes. So I think the short answer to your question is that water flows through chain-link fences, even with the vines on them. And then if it's really high flooding, it pushes the chain-link over. So if you have the debris that you're talking about.
Okay. Okay. So that is engineered in where they don't create a flood-rise problem?
Yes, they're not considered a solid barrier.
Okay. And in your, in your elevation of 2.8 more or less along the length, where, what is, what is the differential? Where is the highest point? Where is the lowest point in that 1.4 miles or whatever it is?
I'm going to have Zach come give you that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I believe the question is related to the description that the profile is coming up about 2.8 feet beyond what was originally planned. And so the most significant rise that, where we had to adjust the profile is north of Romero Creek or west of Romero Creek, in between Romero and San Ysidro Creeks. So that's where the profile was adjusted down before, and we were able to work with Caltrans to identify a design that would work where we could still meet the required stopping site distances for the freeway design, but then also meet the floodplain requirements. So that's why that profile comes up about 2.8 feet from what was originally proposed in the design.
So, so the freeway isn't quite, quite the basin, debris basin, et cetera, that it used to be there? Is that correct? It's more elevated, so it's, the impact isn't going to be quite like a swimming pool like it was before?
The profile changes, that's now reflected in the design, more or less matches the existing condition of the freeway outside of, directly adjacent to the three bridge structures. But in between the bridges, the profile more or less matches what's currently out there today, so-
It does?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So there won't be a significant difference?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I don't know who would like to take this question regarding the mitigation, the financing, the helping of the severe receptors with building, with mitigation, helping to mitigate sound and decibel levels, et cetera, individuals. Is, is, are sound walls permitted on individual properties?
So that we would-
In other words, is flood-rise, is flood-rise a component? If, in other words, would you have to get a CUP? Would an homeowner need to, the permitting for, quote, "to mitigate sound" if they're in a FEMA flood-rise area? How does that work?
Commissioner Senour, through the chair. This is Chris, the planner. So if a applicant, if a neighbor, an applicant was proposing to build a sound wall on their own property-
Yes.
-would need to get a permit, a coastal development permit, from the County of Santa Barbara to build that sound wall? And since it's within the floodway or the flood hazard overlay, our flood control staff would review that to see if it met their standards, and they may apply a no-rise standard to that as well. It would just depend on the project and where it's located. Maybe flood control would have more information.
Okay. All right. That's all my questions for right now, and then if flood control comes up later, maybe address that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I'm glad, I mean, I think this may be a question that several of you need to answer, but I'm glad Walter's here because I think you may be able to answer it as, you know, this idea of people building their own sound walls, you know, becomes a kind of complicated matrix as you go down this road. When we reviewed this project a long time ago, before FEMA mapping was done, it was determined that this whole idea of a sound wall was put in abeyance because there was no way, based upon the old maps, to actually accomplish a sound wall with blowout patches or whatever other way. This new criteria that's come up about not being able to meet a financial threshold because it doesn't, there's not enough buildings behind that sound wall, irrespective of that, because I want to settle this in my own mind once and for all. If that were not a requirement, based upon the new flood elevations that exist, are there designs approved by the Department of Highways that could be used to build a sound wall in the locations that we're talking about?
So, a couple of things to answer your question. Number one, I should clear up. There was a little bit of a misunderstanding there. So the, remember that, and you remember this because we just talked about it the other day. The project originally had proposed sound walls. So all the sound walls that were originally proposed met the steps for the federal government and the state government, so that cost reasonableness requirement was met by those sound walls. What the sound walls couldn't meet was the no-rise requirement. So that's why all the sound walls were removed from the project. With the new mapping, so the cost reasonableness was not a factor that affected those sound walls that we had shown everybody and people voted on. That was already met.
Yeah, I want to take, I want to take the cost reasonableness factor out of this, out of this equation.
Yeah.
What I want to know is, based upon the current flood elevation-
Right.
-could a sound wall of a design with blowout patches that meets federal highway standards be implemented?
So that's what we studied, and we have the team here, too, who can back it up. Yeah, the answer is no. So the recovery mapping that we studied when the project was approved for the coastal development permit, we couldn't meet the no-rise requirement with that. The team re-looked at that recently with the draft mapping, the draft FEMA mapping. And as you saw, the inundation area is significant, right? As we all know, because the freeway floods in this area periodically on a regular basis, the debris flow was significant in this area. So the answer unfortunately is no. Cost reasonableness aside, the answer is no from a rise condition as well. Did you want to? Yeah. I'm getting the, yeah, yeah.
I think that answers my question.
So, to follow up that question one more time. So really, because of the fact, even though you built large openings, bulkheads, three times the size of the original one, some places, or two times, it's because of that downstream? Like Oak Creek has a little, you know, six-foot opening to the ocean. You know, because of those situations on all, all your creeks, including Montecito Creek, that has to be done before any thought of having a sound wall could be put in Montecito?
I'll let flood control give you more details on that, but our understanding is yes. And so just to reiterate the point there. So the sound walls are different than the bridges. So the bridges, as you know, were building to 100-year storms.
Right.
And the old bridge walls are going to stay in place to protect the downstream from flooding. But yes, significant changes have to occur in the Montecito watershed before we could meet the no-rise requirement for sound walls. And Walter's here. Walter can come up.
Hi, Walter Rubicaba, Santa Barbara County Flood Control. Commissioner Paluche through the chair. That is correct. Until those downstream improvements are done, we're going to have conveyance issues in the Montecito area. Most of those creeks have anywhere between 10- to 25-year conveyance. That's why we're putting the bulkheads in the bridges. Everything that's been discussed today, county flood control is in supportive. This reanalysis needed to be done. The changes that are being done are appropriate. This is a, is a very challenging area from a flooding standpoint.
Walter, I know you're not an attorney, but the fact that we have this situation in Montecito, San Ysidro, Oak, and Romero, where the downstream owners of properties below the freeway have insufficient drainage to support a 100-year flood, and that's why we don't have the 100-year protection under the freeway. So, it seems like the people below could cause great harm to the people above the freeway by virtue of not making this modification. So now that the freeway has done their part and they've satisfied their responsibility, where does the county's responsibility begin and one of the private owners' responsibility begin? Is everybody north of the freeway have no, no allowance for protection from south of the freeway, and that's just how it is? I mean, how does that work? I mean, this, within the era of liability, it's everyone's, it has to have insurance for this or that, or get sued for a few, your fingernail came off on the freeway and it rose the height of the, I mean, can you tell me a little bit about what's the plan the county has, good faith, to make this happen?
Yes. Commissioner Paluche through the chair. I'm not going to try to answer any legal questions because, again, I'm not an attorney. The flood control district is not approaching this from who's legally liable to improve the channels. What we are looking at it from is what improvements need to be done in this community to have 100-year conveyance to the maximum extent possible. That includes downstream, that includes improvements to downstream of 101 and upstream of 101, all the way to the hillsides. There are some areas of those channels that have naturally 100-year conveyance, but most of them, most of those channels do not, downstream or upstream. We're not looking at it from who's liable currently with the situation. We're just looking at it from what improvements are needed.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I'm sure there's got to be an attorney or two at the county that says, "By the way, guys, we got to get money to get this water through underneath the freeway. We no longer have an excuse. We can't blame it on Caltrans. Caltrans has done their part." So now, you can't say that the people on the north of the freeway don't have a case that if water could pass through, it's going to be a lot less hazardous for our community if the 100-year storm was allowed to get out to the ocean. I mean, let's be frank about it. I mean, we here at this body would just say we would wish that that would occur. I understand that right-of-way cost is enormous, but how high a priority is that for our county? And I know you can't answer that either.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the global, if you look at the global improvements, it's about $1 billion to do all the improvements. That, we just finished the master plan. It's somewhere around $800 million to do it. It's a lot of work. How high is the priority? It's very high. But, and I'm getting a little bit off track here, but the county is not going to be able to pay for these improvements. It's going to take federal grants. It's going to probably take additional assessments. It's going to require additional community support. The money's not there to do this right now. It's probably a 50- to 100-year improvement by the time this stuff is done. As you mentioned, Caltrans is doing their part. They're building improvements right now, and they have met the conditions of what flood control asked for and their own standards require is to do 100-year bridges. And again, they're bulketing them because we don't want to create downstream impacts.
One last question here. In defense, for a change, of the downstream residents, now that this maps out, I mean, it's only tentative because they have a nice little window of time to wait in order for it to be official, these people who have knowledge of these changes, they can't really sell their house now with the knowledge of disclosing that they're in a serious flood predicament now. So how does that work? I mean, so these houses are frozen in time and they can't be sold unless the new owner takes the responsibility that the present owner has, I guess. Because we, we're not going to change that. I don't think it's 800, what'd you, how much did you say it was?
800 million.
800 million?
Commissioner Paluche through the chair. Again, I'm not going to answer legal questions.
Sure. We're just, we just have to say this in this, in this audience, that we're aware of the liabilities that are out there for, people are north of the freeway and people south of the freeway. They both have issues.
I'll answer it this way. The conditions of the Montecito area were there pre-debris flow. The risk was there pre-debris flow. It's there post-debris flow. It's there now. The channels are 15- to 25-year capacity. This new effective map hasn't changed that. The preliminary map hasn't changed that. The effective map hasn't changed that. The high-hazard map hasn't changed that. These are high-risk areas, and they have been historically. Improvements were done up against creek channels that creates risk, and that still exists. And that's why, as Kirsten was just mentioning, they require flood insurance.
Thank you very much for your candid comments.
I have a question.
Speak up.
I have a question regarding flood control. I'm still confused where we're putting all these requirements on Caltrans to mitigate the water flowing down toward the ocean. And you aren't having any requirements at the Miramar for all that construction that's going to be done right there next to the creek. And I still don't understand how that can just be like, sort of blown off by the county. I mean, I just don't understand if you're having the whole Caltrans rise the height of the freeway and the water that's going through. And somebody commented while we were doing our questions about how this is going to impact the water once it gets to the freeway. What happens after that?
Can't go anywhere.
It can't go anywhere. So it's just going to sit there pooling and-
But that is, they haven't changed anything.
Right, but it's still going to be, I mean, I don't understand how there can be this many requirements for feet and inches for the freeway, and then we're not even talking like you're talking about, you know, when it gets past the freeway. It, I just, I'd love somebody to explain that to me.
Walter, isn't there a fairly large basin adjacent to the Miramar that can hold a bunch of water? I mean-
But it's flooded. It's flooded last January.
I'm going to, Commissioner Stahl through the chair. I think the best way to answer this, there's not a development that occurs in the Montecito area that doesn't have to meet the flood control standards. That includes the Miramar. This isn't the case on the Miramar. This is for the US 101. But all the development that occurs in the Montecito area, anywhere countywide, has to be reviewed by, well, not all of, if it's in the high-hazard areas or if it's in the flood zone, it gets reviewed by flood control. There's no one who kind of like slips through the channels because of who they are. The Miramar was reviewed as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Are there the 101 project?
I just, I have a question in terms of just general how Caltrans works. You decided to southbound entrance to the freeway at Santa Cederro. How did you communicate with the county as to the ramifications of doing that? In terms of safety and anything else? Because it's closed, all those people on Post Salibo and Fernald and at the Miramar are all essentially locked in there. So, when you were making this plan, how was it, how was it planned out with the county as to how to work around that in case of an emergency of any sort?
So, good question. And this gives me an excellent opportunity to highlight all of the years and years and years of planning that go into these projects. Because not just the ramp at Post Salibo, but every single ramp that's closed in the project gets reviewed and studied for a detour plan. And that gets reviewed and studied with the jurisdictions where the project is located. So, in this case, the county, and other jurisdictions, the city of Carpinteria or the city of Santa Cederro. And so, what happens, that part of pre-planning projects, what happens behind the scenes is that they look at traffic numbers and projected traffic for any type of improvement and the closures during construction. So, that's all reviewed and looked at. And because this area also had some local street improvements, we had parallel projects with the two roundabouts, Santa Cederro Roundabout and Olive Mill Roundabout. Those projects were implemented ahead of the freeway construction, specifically to help reduce local street congestion while we were building the freeway parts. So, that was the junction, the cag, those parts early. We built those ahead of construction so they could be open and functional, started construction on the freeway. So, a lot of work happens behind the scenes to handle the freeway traffic with going to keep on the, so we don't flood streets with congestion. Buildings, but also look at when we do close ramps, rebuild them, what happens to the traffic that use those ramps? Where does it go? Where do we want it to go for optimal traffic flows in the area? So, that's why you see each closure, we give you a map and a plan. People in advance, this is how long closure, here is the detail to you while we're doing this. So, that's all been planned in advance. And then before construction starts, we meet with first responders and transit agencies and the school districts and a whole bunch of people, community in general. And we talk about the fact, this is what's coming up. Here's what you can expect. Here are the detours that we have planned. We talk on a committee level with the first responders about, do you have any concerns about this? Here's how we've rerouted traffic. Here's how we see things. Here's how we've measured so that vehicles for emergency response can get through. If you have any issues, we talk through all of those before construction starts. We meet with them on a regular basis during construction. And then we do the same thing with the transit providers too, because buses, as you know, are just as big as fire trucks. And what we really care about is everyday use, you know, making sure people can get where they need to go. That's why we also meet with schools and the superintendents and the private schools as well. And we talk to them about that too, so that their staff knows. And then we meet, like I said, throughout construction as well to make sure that everything's working the way that we planned it to work. And if it doesn't, we can adjust.
So, I got one adjustment for you, just because I'm a local resident. You know, as...
Everybody's a local resident.
Once the, once the roundabouts got built at the, at the corner of, what is it? Coast Village Circle where it comes out and meets, you know, Honor Bar is?
Yep.
Because that stop sign there?
Yes.
Everybody's through that roundabout, and you'll have traffic backed up halfway down North Cayman's, because no one can get through. That stop sign, I don't know if there's a temporary measure that could be implemented until ramp from Santa Cederro Road is, everyone has caught that hut. You know, people are moving the roundabout very quickly, and all of a sudden, there's no way to get past it, and it's got a tremendous traffic jam.
We can talk with the county about that as part of the planning for building the roundabout, and also for the function of the roundabout too, on Coast Village Road, and people to use the crosswalk.
It's the fastest way to spin around to a traffic jam.
Most of the time, it works really well, I will say. But I hear you saying, we've, we've all been caught in it a few times, but for the vast majority of time, it works really well. So, but we'll take that comment back.
Just a comment.
I have a comment.
My turn. I have to plug the contractor, because being an urban freeway builder myself, the buck stops with, with the contractor, and he has to provide a traffic plan, a traffic management plan to Caltrans, right?
Actually, it's the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments that, and the planning team that provides that, not the contractor.
Well, I'd be surprised, because we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in every bid to maintain a traffic design, because we're going to be held accountable for the builder. So, you can have agencies above that, but that plan, if I'm not wrong, is, is generated by the contractor initially. Is that not true?
Do you want to?
You guys do differently.
We do it a little bit differently.
Anyway, it's not that important. I just want to plug...
Granite's doing a great job. Do you want to plug them?
They did a great job, Granite. And you guys do too. That's all. I won't argue who started it.
Yes, sorry.
Just in terms of commenting?
Yes.
It would be really helpful as a resident, and I work there as well, when there's an issue on the freeway, whether it's a planned issue or it's an emergency of some sort. It would be really helpful. You guys do a great job of, of getting people off the freeway and, and, you know, moving things along there. But what doesn't happen is like up on East Valley Road, people hear about there's a problem. Everybody's on the 192 from Ojai all the way through. And if there was a way to coordinate with the county of having somebody directing traffic all along the, the 192 from like Sheffield through Olive Miller, Hot Springs, I guess it is there, and to Sycamore, it would be really helpful to the people who live there, because everything's handled down by the freeway, but up north, it's just, you know, everybody's on their own.
So, we do get that comment a lot, just to share with you. And unfortunately, this comes down to how many tax dollars we all want to pay and how they're used. There's just unfortunately not enough money to have traffic control.
That's not, that's not unacceptable. Excuse, this is communication. I'm not talking about spending money. I'm talking about having some sort of a plan for when there is a problem on the freeway, and you're getting people off the freeway to have traffic controls, of just somebody there with a sign and, you know, moving people along.
So, that's, that's the part I'm talking about from the funding perspective, is having someone there is extremely expensive. But we do planning in advance with the county and with Caltrans about what happens when an accident occurs and where the traffic goes. In our area, we know where traffic goes, because there's only a few streets. There's also quick maps on Caltrans that can tell you if there's road backups with an accident, so there are real-time numbers on those. But in terms of having someone stand out there with the sign every time there's an accident, that's the part where...
I'm not talking about an accident. I'm talking about a semi-truck spilling on the freeway. And it's taking Caltrans hours to get people. And I think if it comes down to dollars and cents, it would be nice if we could, as a commission, could make a request that you come up with an amount of money, and then we can ask the county to build that into some sort of an emergency budget item. Because that's not okay to just say, you know, we can't afford to move the traffic along, so you're just going to have to deal with it, because we don't have the money to pay for somebody to direct the traffic. I, I'd just like to see if we were to do that, how much that would cost. I mean, how much money are you talking about?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think we've strayed from the project before us. I think Ms. Stahl has a relevant and poignant questions. However, they're outside of what's before the commission today. So, I'd recommend that Commissioner Stahl, like, contact Caltrans offline. That's outside of what we're reviewing today.
But it's all part of the same issue.
We're not agendized to have this conversation outside of the scope that's before you today. So, I'd recommend the chair that we bring it back to the item before you and ask for public comment.
Well, I'm a member of the public as well, as being a commissioner. And I, you know, this is all part of the same package. We're talking about the freeway going through Montecito. And I'm just asking, you know, how could we address this? How could we address this issue if you're telling me other people have brought this up to you many times? I mean, we're talking about the 101. To me, this is the same issue. So, I'm just saying, if it's an issue that's been brought to your attention many times, how can we have this conversation in a way that could resolve it?
Commissioner Stahl, if I could just chime in. I mean, we, we have a regular coordination meeting with Caltrans. Happy to put this on one of our agendas to coordinate with them and work on something. I do agree with Mr. Wilson. This is a little, like, we're here about this project, and we need you guys to provide any comments specifically on this project, but we could take note of this and talk about it at our coordination meetings.
And I think it's similar to the question that I asked.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way that we know during rush hour?
Yeah.
That there might be some other form of traffic control at that little corner? Because it would resolve a lot of other problems, and I think it belongs in your committee to discuss it at that level.
Coordination, I totally agree. So, we're happy to do that.
But as a commissioner, can we, like, formally request that these issues be addressed at your next coordination meeting?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that would be no.
It's just the only item on our agenda.
Yeah, as Mr. Seawards has indicated, we heard the comments. They can bring them up. But as far as a motion by the commission, it's what's before you and what's agendized. So, you're, it's not appropriate to make motions or other conversations outside of what is agendized. And part of that is because we are bound for public notification and disclosure of what is being heard and the items being taken. So, that's why I constantly say, stay on track.
And I will trust the fact that you will bring this up at your next hearing and discuss some of these little bumps along the way that happened along the 192 and happened down on Coast Village Road. It'd be nice if there was a Band-Aid solution for a while until the project is really completed, so that we could kind of make things a little easier.
I was just talking to Ms. Liu and Mr. Schmuckle this week about items for coordination meetings, so I totally understand. Oops.
Great.
Okay.
That would be great. I think it's time to entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do public comment. We'll open the floor to public comment.
No hands up online, and I am not in receipt of any speaker slips today.
Okay.
Put it on the board.
Yeah, can we bring the resolution up on the board?
Chair, Kupiak Commissioners, we have a draft resolution that we can put up, and then you're allowed to submit comments as well, if you want to pass on comments to the county planning commission. So, I think what we'll do is we'll see if anybody has additional comments to add besides the resolution, which essentially is just recommending approval of the project to the county planning commission. And if there are comments, we'll take a break and review it, and then come back with the final draft.
I think we need to do that. Question, the recommendations by MBAR, are they already put forth to the board of supervisors? That's already in, right?
Commissioner Paluche through the chair. So, the project is going to need to go back to MBAR to get preliminary and final approval after it's approved by the county planning commission. So, they'll need to go back to MBAR with their final design and have that be reviewed and approved by them.
Do you know if you're going back to MBAR at final and consent? Or are you going back to MBAR for a full presentation?
I think it's on the full board, but I would need to check. I'm almost positive it's at the full board.
Okay, well, so, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just to clarify what what the staff just indicated, what we're looking for is a motion. The resolution's already been provided. We're not looking at editing it or wordsmithing it. If there's something specific that, based on the hearing today, that needs to be changed, that's fine. Otherwise, we're not going to spend time wordsmithing the resolution. So, we're looking for a motion that's indicated in the staff report for the commission to take.
Can I have that in front, put that in front of me? I mean, the Bushes speak for themselves, but...
No, we don't want to bring the resolution up, just the recommended actions.
Yeah.
Just the actions.
Just move to approve the resolution as presented.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay.
After the review that we went through the other day, I'm, I'm satisfied that this is what being proposed is.
Do we have to read the resolution into the...
So, we don't have to read it in? So, Sandy, you want to just do your, your thing?
Oh, I'd like to propose a motion that we adopt the resolution recommended that the planning, county planning commission approve the project subject to the conditions of approval included in attachment B.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I have a second. Whoops, whoops, backing up.
Go ahead. Do it.
If you look on your staff report...
If you look on the staff report, page two, the recommended procedures, actions are, make the findings in attachment A. Recommend the county planning commission to consider environmental review documents included as attachment C, and not subject to environmental impact report or negative declaration that should be prepared for the project as outlined in bullet number two. And then number three, which is adopt a resolution recommending that the county planning commission approve the project subject to conditions as attachment B. So, I just wanted to read that. It's more than what's on the screen, so if the, the motion maker would indicate that that's the motion to include those things, then I think we could go forward.
That is the intent of my motion.
Okay. I would second that. Mr. Wilson, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Can we do a roll call?
Commissioner Paluche.
Yes.
Commissioner Stahl.
Yes.
Commissioner Senauer.
Yes.
And Chair Kupiak.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, Merry Christmas to you two.
Thank you all. Thank you for bringing us up to speed. I think we can adjourn. Oh, wait.
So, so Chair and Commissioners, there may be one last item we may want to discuss before we adjourn.
Yeah.
Speak up, or I'm going to leave.
So, Chair and Commissioners, one item, just procedural. Because there's no items projected for January, we look for a motion to cancel that hearing at this time.
Okay.
I move that we cancel the January Montecito Planning Commission meeting.
For 2025.
For next year, January 25.
It's the January 15, 2025, just for the record. And it looks like, it looks like Commissioner Senauer, we lost her. So, we could probably just...
We've got enough.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye.
Oh. I'll second.
Are we officially adjourned now?
We're officially adjourned.
Okay, officially adjourned, thank you so much.